His mother, last week. So he's been running around like a chicken with his head cut off all week long. But he wanted to have a town hall meeting, and that's why we're here. I'm a little late, as I said. I'm killing time, trustee Burgess. I'm a little late, as I said, and he's gonna take over and conduct his town hall meeting. Thank everyone for coming out, really appreciate it. Thank you trustee Tate. I appreciate you filling in. I know I called just the last minute, it was the last minute thing that I did. That happens when everything comes down at one time, but anyway, thank you very much. And I'd like to thank everyone that came out tonight. At one time I wasn't gonna do it, but I decided to, better than just sitting around waiting. So I said, okay, let's have a town hall meeting and try to discuss some of the things that we need to discuss in the village and also to inform the people. So I'll wait for a few more minutes until this clock gets through and then we'll go into it. I'm not gonna wait for people because it's 7:20, those that came are here, so we'll go from there. Okay, we get started. As I stated before, this is a meeting for the village residents to give information, answer questions, take down complaints and see if we can solve them. And we can't solve all the problems, but we can discuss them and kind of find out what it is that you are not happy with. I mean, you know, we're all here together, maybe one person maybe wants to do something, another person can help them, that's what the village is about. It's about trying to help each other. The village cannot do it all. The village cannot make everything right for everyone. That's why you have neighbors, that's why you call them neighbors, because that's who really has your back. The village provides services, you pay taxes, they provide the services for you. But day to day, village tries to do things day to day, but it doesn't work out that way because it's much more residents than there are people that work in the village. So what makes villages great is when the neighbors interact with each other and try to help one another or expose them to certain avenues that they may not have known about to get their problems solved. So first of all, I had a question that was asked me the other week about the, in Lincoln Meadows, about the infrastructure there at the sewer was actually eroding and going down. I thought that they had filled it in with asphalt. So I went further and, you know, when someone tells you something, you should go check on it. When I checked on it, it was just filled in with what they call, it's like a gravel, but it's real fine. And that's like a layman for asphalt or for concrete, that's what they filled it in with. So it's not filled in with asphalt. I understand that it's going to be, but we have to pay some bills first where we can get the concrete to be delivered. So, but it is filled in, it won't erode, but it's not finished. And also the lights, the lights going into Lincoln Meadows are out and there's another area in that that are out. And tonight, if anyone knows of any other area that the lights are out in, I would appreciate that. Just give me an address near there, you know, or if it's just a street or something, just give me that address and I can go and find out. Because a lot of times it could just be the bulbs, even though the bulbs were supposed to be guaranteed, but they were man-made, so by them being man-made, they will falter. But we have a guarantee that, I think it's two years, that if anything happens, they replace it free. So, and these are new bulbs, so, but we need to know, know one person. Public Works is supposed to go around, but as you know, Public Works gets off at 3:30 in the afternoon, lights aren't on yet. So if anyone knows that there's lights out in the area, please let me know and I can write that down and give it to Kevin and let him know. And that's like I said before, we have to work together. So those are some of the things that we're looking at. I'm gonna get the dates as soon as I can get them from Kevin, as far as picking up the limbs. We're gonna have another one, I know it's gonna be one in spring, so probably sometime in April. And also if you see on your street, when it rains, that your streets are flooding, it's due to the sewers, due to debris in the streets that roll down, get caught in the sewers and the floods in it. Now, all I would ask is for the people that live around there, get a rake, pull it away from there, pick it up, or just, you know, because the sweeper cannot come out on a train. And it won't come out on a train. So it behooves you to pull that debris away from that sewer, open it up so you can drain so your street doesn't flood. But also in the meantime, report it. Come up to the village hall, don't wait for a meeting or whatever, come to the village hall and say, oh, my street so-and-so, that we have standing water and we'd like someone to come out to dress it. So those are some of the things that we as residents should bring to attention of the village, that's their job to do it, but they cannot police everything, they cannot be every place at one, all the time, different times. So I stated before, we have maybe ten public works, workers out and they're doing jobs, they're not looking, especially if it's raining, because if it's raining, they're doing something else. So we have to work together, you just can't rely on one person to do it, we work together to get it done. The, and this is something I saw recently, sidewalks in South Village, a lot of people are asking, how did that happen, why are they doing this, why are they bursting? Some of them look like pyramids, they're just cracking through. That comes from erosion, that comes from somewhere down there, that right there should let you know that you have a water main, a small break in the water, the domestic water, because it washed away in the sun and that's why you got the sidewalks. So just, just that alone, if you see that, you can see that how many, because eventually it's gonna come up through the, through the ground, but right now that's a indication that there is water flowing under that sidewalk somewhere. So if you see your sidewalk shifting a little bit, starting to go down or raise up, that's what's happening. That's one waiting to happen. I mean, infrastructure here in the village is 60 years old, so, you know, but that's something that you can keep an eye on and inform. Anything you see that's different in your neighborhood or your block, your neighbor's block, inform. Because no one, we don't have anybody to walk around to, to do that, to take, you know, every block, every single block and find out. We need your help, we need the residents' help to report those things. And if you don't get the answer, if it doesn't, if it stays too long, come to the board meeting, inform the board, let them know that you did report this and it's still that way, now it's incumbent upon the board to, to make sure that it gets on whatever list it has to get on, start getting paid, outfits. So those things are preventive ways to do that, because sooner or later that sidewalk's gonna be all the way up and, you know, God forbid anybody get hurt, but that will happen if we just don't do anything. All right, well, let me see, so I can get this right. The police department has two new vehicles, they're two Ford Tauruses. And they were purchased with drugs, I'm sorry, with tow fund money. So I guess we have that kind of money there, I heard, I was told it was a hundred and some thousand dollars in there, so they purchased two vehicles and I understand, and we're gonna get some SUVs. We have got them, those in the wild, so we do need those. That's something that we definitely need because the SUVs that we have now run 24/7. It was four of them purchased, three of them for patrol use and one was for, at that time, for the deputy or the chief of police. So the chief of police rides around and one of them is like an unmarked marked gray SUV. Reason why I say it's like that, if you look at it good enough, you can see where the lights are. So it's not totally unmarked, but it's unmarked marked, it doesn't have South Village on it. And did anyone see those vehicles first of all, anyone see them? Okay, they're sitting right there behind police department, gray. I don't know the other color, but it's a gray, they're right there, you can tell them, it looks different than anything sitting out there. Also, did you know that we have a new fire truck? Anyone know that? And anyone seen that? Okay, well, that's at the fire station, they had it out here the last, what was it, the 7th of February at the last committee meeting. So that truck has been delivered and it's in service. So it holds 2,000 gallons of water. Now you may think that's not, that that's a lot of water. It is in perspective, and I asked a question, would that be enough to put out a house fire? And I was told that 13 to 1,200 gallons is plenty to put a house fire. If you have to use 2,000 gallons of water to put a house fire out, you weren't trained properly. So, and because our other trucks hold 750, I think we have one that holds 1,000 and then the other one with 500. All the trucks are set for the snorkel hold water. The big long snorkel that you've seen before that goes up in the air holds no water, but they have pumps on them. So all the trucks have pumps where they can hook up, but for the, for this one that we just got, that'll be our main one when we have a fire, that'll be the main one that's called out because it can actually pull up, hook up and spray, not to worry about a fire hydrant. Now with that one, that we have two or three, but by the time we put that one out, we have another one coming right behind it. So as you know that when they have, when the call goes out, they take the first ones, as far as the crew that comes out, they leave in the first truck and then the other ones that come behind them. And they have to use the third or have to call another town, that's, then that's when they put that call there, but they try to handle it from within. Ah, let me see, I think that's about all that I can think about as far as what happened, what's been happening, what happened new in the village. Yeah, that's about it. If there's any questions, I'm waiting till 8:15 to ask a question, so if there's any questions, let's start. Okay.
I have several questions. First of all, the no meetings. To your knowledge, is there a reason why there's no meeting? Secondly, there's statutes in place that indicate how a board is to be run, and one of those indicate that no money, no money is to be dealt with without the approval of the board. Now if I'm wrong, I will apologize, but I have read this over and over and it indicates that you must have the approval of the board. Without having a couple of meetings, I, it's my understanding that we had to get another loan supposedly to pay payroll. And my understanding is that we are now up to 2.1 million dollars that we owe. And how did all this happen without board approval? And why is it that whenever we have a problem making payroll, a meeting is canceled? And then by the next meeting, oh, that problem was taken care of. But we're not told how or why. So Derek, I would like to know from you, are you aware of the reasoning behind not having the meetings? Have you been addressed as far as borrowing money or transferring money or, and as far as I'm concerned, when you take money from the water department, you are borrowing it because the law says you must repay it. So it's another long type of situation that gets shoved under the rug, but I'd like to know if, if the trustees are made aware of this when there are no meetings.
Okay, um, let me see if I can go down. The first thing is why so, why, I'm sorry, why are meetings being canceled? This past Tuesday, it wasn't canceled, it wasn't enacted. In other words, we get a calendar every year around the end of December to how many meetings we're going to have, and you can always call a special meeting. If you get, two, three trustees can call a special meeting, it takes four, it takes four legal officials, or I'm sorry, trustees to actually have the meeting, but three can put in for a, for a meeting. This meeting was not scheduled for this past Tuesday. I guess, you know, the mayor makes up the calendar, like I said, in December, he didn't, he didn't put that in there. So it's not that it was canceled, it was never scheduled. The money to be voted out, you're absolutely right, all money is supposed to be voted out by the majority of the board. That's true. However, if it's an emergency, it can be consensus, but the following meeting, you have to vote it out. So if it's an emergency, as you stated, payroll or something broke and we don't have the money, we have to take it from another area or transfer it from someplace else, if the consensus is given by the board to do that because it's an emergency, the very next board meeting, it has to be voted out. So that's, that's something that, that's when you use, as they say, a consensus. Me myself, I'm tired of using consensus for every little thing, because that's what you have meetings for, so you can discuss why, when, where and how do we have to do this. Every week or every month, we have to have a consensus to pay a bill. And it's always right after, you said before, no, it's right after we have a meeting, then all of a sudden we need some money. So that's something that I'm not happy with. I mean, you knew that we were behind, just like you have your bill, you had, you paid your water bill on the 21st of the month, you know every other month that your water bill is due on 21st. You know your car bill is due on the 5th, you know your rent is due on the 1st. If you don't have that money for those different items, you make arrangements before the due date. And if you don't, they have what they call late fees. So for us to, because we don't, we don't impose late fees on ourselves, but if you know that you had a meeting just yesterday and you know, and you're gonna send out an email stating that we need to go, extra amount of money out, I don't know who would, I'll just put it this way, you know that much money not coming in the next day. It should or even, or something, but it's not gonna come in. My question is, what happened, what would happen to this village if we didn't have a water fund to borrow from? We cannot borrow a loan, we cannot have a loan, there's no way we can get a loan, for some reason we have no bond ready. So if we didn't have a water fund to get the money from, to transfer it out of, what would we, what would we do? No one can answer that, but it's unfortunate, and you said pay back. I've been a trustee for 10, 11 years, I've never seen money paid back. I've seen money come in and may stay a little longer than the last time before we took it out, but I've never seen a plan, anything that says in a budget that we're gonna pay the water fund back X amount of money. So we got that money and that, and I continue to keep saying, we get that money because our water rates, we don't have to pay, excuse me. We don't have to pay ourselves back, so therefore we don't have to pay a penalty. So there is nothing that we have to take care of, I mean, there's nothing that to be taken care of as far as paying that money back. You said loan to pay payroll, like I stated before, if we didn't have the money, payroll would be in trouble. Well, I would hate to go to work and my payroll is due Friday and you tell me Wednesday we can't pay you. Some people gonna be there Thursday, who gonna show up? That's a bad thing to have for a village. So you should let them know ahead of time, not that you're not gonna pay, but make arrangements to get that money there. And you said as far as meetings being canceled, when we owe money? No, like I said before, they're not canceled. But it is ironic that right after a meeting we have, all of a sudden now we have to transfer money, that is very odd, but they're not canceled. You know, if the, I think maybe we had maybe three meetings in the past year that were actually canceled. And the first, the last one was Tuesday. We had a special meeting, which at a special meeting you can vote, that's why I thought it was kind of ironic, you can actually vote because it's a regular meeting, it's a special meeting, you conduct business. Then the committee meeting was canceled, lack of the person that was supposed to be the president didn't, didn't show up, so there was no presentation, so therefore no need for, for the meeting. However, the very next day, I get an email saying that we have to transfer money. Why couldn't we do this at the special meeting or couldn't it be called for that reason? We've called the meetings unless they are. Those are some of the things that we should look at, because you, the people, when we don't have money, when we don't have any money, when we cannot make obligations, you're gonna come to the board and say, why? Because that's who is in charge of the money, is the board. Okay? Anyone, who is, who is, yes ma'am?
Uh, all the money coming out of the water fund, if we don't have to pay ourselves back, how is the infrastructure there going to be upgraded?
Very, 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 very good question. Because first of all, we cannot go out and borrow millions of dollars unless it's a bond. You don't wanna borrow millions of dollars, because the interest rate will kill you, that's like buying a vehicle, a car, that costs you $30,000 with your credit card.
So in other words, the infrastructure won't be changed unless you can water?
No, I'm not gonna say that you never, because I can't say never, but if, if you don't have, first of all, to get Lake Michigan water, yes, you have to fix the infrastructure, you have to bring the rate as far as the, the water break or the seepage or the loss of down to less than 10%, right now it's above that. And nobody's gonna extend credit to us at this particular point in time. We could, if we had the capability of getting a bond, we could flow the bond to get billions of dollars to fix the infrastructure enough to get Lake Michigan water. So there's a lot of steps to it. Will we ever get it? One day, maybe. Is it in the future? No. Our infrastructure is, IDNR won't give us a permit to hook onto someone else, and you don't want to. I mean, you think that you're, you know, you don't, you don't wanna have a double-digit rate as far as the percentage rate of water just going out. It costs us money just for the chemicals that we're wasting down the drain. Now we hook up to somebody else, it's just like you have a, a break at your house and the meters running, just continue to run till you fix it. So you can't just say, I'm, I'ma wait, so it's, it's something that has to be done, it's something that was mandated, it was something that was voted on to get Lake Michigan water. It's just like, just like the wall.
We're still paying our water bills, what's happening to the garbage portion, are we paying our garbage bills?
Yes. As a matter of fact, in the, the new agreement that we have that was an extension, it stated that they would grant us this, they would grant us the money that we owe, they would wash that away for two different reasons. First, being able to raise the rate for garbage for the next 14 years. How it got to 14 years, it was 10 years that they wanted an extension, but they wanted to revert it back four years that we still have left on the contract for the raise, so that's 3% for the next 14 years. That's the first thing they wanted to do. And then the second thing that they wanted to do is have on the contract, I was kind of against it, but they have on the contract that if South Village gets behind 60 days, we owe them 385,000 dollars. No one saw Village's record? We behind now, we got a lot of bills we're behind. I don't know how much the garbage bills are behind, but I know it has been, because the reason why I'm saying that, they get paid every month, but we collect from the village half of it every month. So the north side may get, may pay us this month and then the south, that's why your bill comes every two months. So to put something in there knowing that it can't happen, you know, it's kind of suspect. I'm not gonna dig a hole and know that I may fall into it, and I just hope I don't. Yes ma'am?
If the new contracts would not have been voted in, you would have owed that 200,000 dollars or however much it was right then, correct?
Yes, okay, we owe them 386,000 dollars.
Would have they do immediately if, if they would have like the next thing?
No, that's what they told you. I offered if you was at the meeting, and I had a meeting with the people that are involved with Republic, I offered to pay 200,000 of that right now out of water fund.
Where would you have gotten that money?
Same place we get it now, water fund.
Oh, there would have been another 200,000?
Yes ma'am, but guess what, we still borrow money for the water fund, but we won't owe anything, we wouldn't have the 3% raise for next 14 years.
Continuing with the contract, wasn't that money forgiven? So if it was forgiven, they cannot call it too, right?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, you said was what forgiven?
They've out, extending the contract, the money that was owed to them at that point was forgiven?
No.
Yes, it was.
How did you get to that conclusion that it was forgiven?
It was forgiven.
I was asking you, how did you get to that conclusion?
Because that was the agreement, was I was at the meetings.
I don't know, I've been at the meetings too, I've never heard of forgiven, I heard that if we don't pay, they would not pick up our garbage. That was the tactic that they, they said, that if we don't pay or agree to this particular contract.
Under the new agreement, that money was forgiven?
No, it was never forgiven ma'am, I don't know where you, I'm sorry, but no, it was that, if it was forgiven, then why did we pay 3% raise every year for the next 14 years?
What, what are we paying?
We paid 3% raise every year for the next 14 years.
My question is, if you would have not continued the contract, where would you have found someone to get through the garbage for less money and not to have a 3% increase per year?
Okay, let me explain, let me explain, let me explain to you. First of all, I did offer to pay them 200,000 dollars right now, right then and there. Then I offered to pay the other 186 over a period of four years for the rest of the contract.
You offered?
Yes, I did.
You offered?
Yes.
Are you the mayor?
No, I'm not the mayor.
Then how can you offer?
Just like, just like they can spend money without getting authorization from the village. I offered, I made an offer to them. Yes, I did. You were at the meeting when I offered. So, by, as far as, no, I'm gonna explain this. I offered that we would use that option, that we would pay two hundred thousand now, and the one hundred and eighty over a period of four years, which would mean that we would not have a contract for fourteen years. I don't know about you, but I never had a job, I wish I did have a job that guaranteed me three percent raise every year for the next fourteen years. I wish I had a job that would do that. I've never heard of a job like that, but I wish I did. And yes, I offered that to them, and once they decided, I would bring it back to the board. But I offered it, yes, I did. Uh, that was a way out. They told me, "No." I said, "Okay." I talked to them, asked the board. I asked the board, and they said, "No," but I tried. I tried so we wouldn't have somebody that's in the village that we cannot negotiate our garbage for the next fourteen years. We can't negotiate.
You're gonna be lucky that you have that rate because it's gonna go way up.
Okay, I'm just, I'm obviously, I'm not gonna argue with you now. I'm not gonna argue with you because there are a lot, there's a lot of, um, scavenger services out there. But guess what? We can't negotiate with them. We may have scavenger service A, B, and C come and say they can do it for half the amount. We can't do it.
Now you know it's gonna take at least three percent to pay the employees more every year.
Did you get a three percent raise on your job? I know, I've worked for forty-seven years. Forty-seven, I've never got a three percent raise.
What?
No.
I got eight percent.
That's nice, then you're fortunate. You're fortunate. I've never got a three percent raise in one year, no.
From the U of A?
So you were still, pardon me?
From the U of A?
Yes, ma'am? Okay. I'm, I'm not gonna sit here and try to do that, but no, I never got, I never got more than two percent. Matter of fact, we didn't get raised for four years. I don't know where, all I can do is tell you what happened to me. Now, where you get the information from? No. Eight percent, that's nice. You must be in the private sector. Eight percent, oh, you got, if you got eight percent, you got a promotion. But now, not for a regular person that's working, eight percent raise, that's pretty good.
UC.
Okay, good. They, they got no money, the University of Illinois, University of Chicago got no money. They're private.
It was based on marriage, on, on?
So now you're talking about marriage. Marriage is not a raise. That's based on performance.
But the three percent, you know, like if you're back twenty years.
Okay, well, you were fortunate. You were very fortunate. Because no, no one at U of A got a three percent raise unless they got a promotion. I said, "U of A," you didn't work at U of A. Okay, well, that's a thing. But no, that's what I offered. They didn't take it. They wanted because they knew that they were gonna get it because they had the votes to get the three percent. But for fourteen years? No. No. Like I said, we negotiated every three years our contract. Our contract was lucrative. I'm not gonna lie, yes, it was. But they didn't give us a raise a lot of times, as long as I was there, because they didn't, the state didn't have the money. But guess what? We had a job. We still worked every day. We wasn't fired, and that's what they threatened to do. But sometimes, especially when it comes to a contract like that, for it affects the whole village, now we have to go, "Well, your garbage for the next fourteen years." Just thinking what happened if we do the water for the next fourteen years at three percent raise. Yes, sir?
To follow up on what Ms. Parker was asking, this is, this is a very good question. How did the village get into a situation when they increased the term of the contract from twenty-eleven? From twenty-eleven to twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and all of a sudden, twenty-sixteen? Oh! We owe all this money, three hundred eighty-some thousand dollars, because someone forgot to do something. And I think the problem is, is that that information was never really communicated to the board, and it was never communicated to the public. And answered, "How did this happen?" You know, "How, how do you owe that?" And just to point out, with the three percent raise, when the villages, under the villages extended contracts from Skyline disposal, that was tied to CPI. The increases were one percent annually, one percent or less. And now you're going from one percent or less to every year, guaranteed three percent increase. The first year of that contract, Republic's earnings were ninety thousand dollars more than the previous year, but that information never was conveyed to the public. So the first year, it's ninety thousand dollars ahead, and every year, it's gonna go up and up and up. So my question is, how did you get to that point?
Okay. How we got to the point where we owe so much and hadn't paid, that was our fault, and it was Republic's fault. We made an agreement back with Skyline, um, had the, um, the company, and Skyline sold to Republic. And we had it in the agreement that we would have a certain percentage raise every year for those ten years that we had, I mean, I'm sorry, I think it was six years, that we had the agreement with Skyline. We did raise it once during the first few years, but after that, I guess it got lost in translation. I don't know how it actually happened, but it was a two-fold problem. That's why I offered, since it was our fault and their fault. It's their fault because they didn't tell us that we owed this money. But back when we first made this agreement, it was agreed upon that we would pay Skyline as we got paid. And as all, as just everybody knows, that all of our water, I'm sorry, all of our garbage money is connected to the, the water money. So quite naturally, if a person didn't pay their water bill, they didn't pay their debt, their, um, garbage bill. So they got their water cut off, that affects the garbage. Plus, they weren't monitoring the homes, and we weren't monitoring the homes that were vacant. So they were still charging us for our homes that are vacant because we didn't come and tell them to take that one off the road because they don't live there. So it was a bookkeeping problem both ways, until corporate found out. Corporate looked and saw how much money we, or how many homes that we, that they're picking up from, and how much money we're getting from it, and saw, "Wait a minute, something's not right." "You're supposed to be paying this rate, and you're not paying that rate. Why?" So they want their money. So they went after the people that made the agreement and said, "Give me my money." The best way they came up with, because it's a win situation only for the company, and the best way they came up with it was, "We will let you, we won't cut your, um, garbage off. We will let you, you don't, and you don't pay us right now unless you're late sixty days." And I looked at the contract, "Wait a minute." So if I'm late sixty days, it didn't say that they would cut our services off. We're late sixty days, they didn't say they would walk away. In the contract, the contract read, "If you don't, if you're behind the sixty days, we demand and expect our three hundred and sixty thousand or eighty thousand dollars that you owe."
Isn't, isn't that prorated by the number of years it goes on for the fourteen years?
There's what prorated? There's what prorated?
Well, I remember reading something in the organs where it was prorated, the amount from three eighty, whatever it was, it was down over the fourteen-year period. Your, your default rate, if you will.
The three eighty is old period. That's how much they calculated that we owe them for not raising that, the rates over the period, I think it's two or three years.
So let me make sure I got this clear. This wasn't Republic's fault. This was someone here's fault.
It was, well, Republic brought the company, so therefore, we owe them, but they didn't, it took them about a couple of years to do, do the paperwork. It took the company to do the paperwork, so that's what happened, and the same thing with us. We didn't do the paperwork. That's why I, for one, at the time, did not want to take and collect the money from the residents. How many residents remember that you went to Skyline to pay your garbage bill? That's, okay, I was leaving that way. If they're listening, they would have had this problem. You would be dealing with Skyline or Republic and say, "Hey, don't start picking up my garbage because, you know, I'm gonna pay you." Everybody might have been late, but when you're late with the village, then we don't pay them, but they still want that money. So it's, and guess what? We don't, how much do we get to do the paperwork? Not enough. Because we have to write on each and every household, "Don't pick up from this one. Don't pick up from that one." "Oh, wait a minute, this one is paid. Now you go ahead and pick up from that." Somebody's gotta write that down. That takes time and money to do that. Are we getting paid to do that? No. They got what they call, you see it on your water bill, UT, utility tax. That's not enough to pay for, for, for somebody, hire somebody to do that. Who's to have a person that does that? That person is not here because they can't afford it. So I would be willing to give it back to Republic and say, "Okay, you guys, you guys go ahead and keep this and keep us out. We would just pick up our water money." Because now, what happens now that we cannot pay, we have to take out of the water fund to pay the garbage bill if we don't get it up. So, and then I did ask the mighty, the question, "How many times do we pay, um, Republic each and every month? How many times?" And it was answered, "Once." We collect money three times a month for your garbage bill and water bill, three times a month. First time being the regular, the money's due on twenty-first, people pay it before then, they pay on time. Second time is those that pay delinquent with late fees. They pay it ten days after or whatever because they didn't have the money. Everyone falls into that every now and then. And the third time that they pay is right before they come out and shut you off. Or they shut you off, you still gotta go up there and pay. So that's three times that you get money in from the residents for the water. Why are we paying the company one time? Any other questions? Really? Okay. Well, that was a good question. I appreciate it. I hope you understood. If not, then I mean, you know, I don't know what to tell you, but I have no reason to lie. I pay a water bill each and every month. I'm here, I see exactly what happened. I see how much money that it costs, and, you know, I just, I cannot see paying. It's nice that you have a job that does that, but three percent raise guaranteed for fourteen years? That's pretty good. Yes, ma'am?
At the, at the end of their fourteen years, they've increased forty-two percent.
At the end of the fourteen years, Republic has increased their finances by forty-two percent. That's a lot of money, and for people living on a fixed income, it's unbelievable. That three percent doesn't sound like much, but you keep adding three percent more next year, and three percent more after that. You're up to nine percent. It goes up to, uh, forty-two percent. And I think it was a wrong decision, but nothing we can do about it.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna hit you with one better than that. You said it increases three percent each year after forty-two percent. The increase is based on what the rate is then. So a three percent right now may be thirty-four percent because it's still down. When it gets up to, say, forty dollars to pick up your guys' three percent of that, so it's not, it's not gonna be the same amount each and every year. It's not gonna be, because your, because your rate is gonna be higher, so it's three percent of that rate that's right where it is right now. Sorry. So it's not gonna be, it's not, it's not gonna be based on what we're paying right now in two thousand seventeen. It'll be based on what you're paying fourteen years from now. When the fourteen years from now comes, that rate is gonna be higher, that three percent is gonna be higher. Yes, ma'am?
What was, uh, the previous contract with Skyline? What was the expiration date on that?
Um, not, okay, we had four years left.
So there was no need to necessarily sign that contract?
Okay. Everybody keeps saying, "I'm, I'm gonna stop that right now." It wasn't, we didn't sign a new contract. We signed an extension. Okay? And in that extension, it threw in recycle bins, which is nice. But where does the village get, because when you recycle and take it to a recycling area, do you get money? Does anyone get paid? Does anyone get their money for the recyclables? Because they get paid. They take that and they sell it. So, do we get, they gave you a nice bin, but you, you worked for it because you separated. The, you separated the items, plastics in here, papers in here, and you did the work for them. And all they gotta do is take it to the, to the recycle place and get, and get, because they got, they get paid for that. Is it a lot? I don't know. How much is it? I don't know. But they do get paid. So no, it wasn't a new contract. It was an extension of the contract. Any, any more questions? Okay. Um, I'm hoping that I was able to answer, and if you think that I'm wrong, fine. That's why if you have pills, I mean, you can go and check it out for yourself. Ask for the agreement. You should be able to get it, ask for it, so you can read it yourself. And if you look at the tapes, you can see, it wasn't that I was giving or talking for the village. I was trying to negotiate. That's what you trust. These dudes go out and find alternative ways to save money and bring it back. You just can't take the first thing coming, which I know most people here don't, don't, don't take the first thing. They're gonna go out and they're going to investigate, especially when it comes to their money. We weren't allowed that process to happen. We weren't allowed that. And that's the part that I looked at, as being an elected official. We didn't even get the chance to say, "Hey, one of the trustees asked a question. If we don't pay you today, you're not gonna pick up our garbage tomorrow." And they told them, "No, we won't pick it up." They don't pick it up? I don't think it would happen myself, but, you know, they told. Yes, ma'am?
I noticed how many towns are paying more than we are. So to get the company to come and be the, be a lawyer?
Oh, reason that being, you're absolutely right. A lot of towns are paying more. It's like a slingshot, yes, they are, because we didn't pay the last few years the rates. But come four years from now, we're gonna slingshot right past. Because you tell me what town is asking for a three percent raise?
What utilities not increasing their rates constantly?
The who?
What utilities are not increasing their rates constantly?
Who's not increasing? No, what I'm saying is, no, I didn't say, everybody increases their rates. However, like I said, we're gonna slingshot. These towns are probably getting one percent raise. We're doing a three percent every single year. Every, you don't think so? You don't think we're doing three percent every year? Then please get the agreement and look at it and see it for yourself. Pardon me?
No, that the other towns are going to get raised higher too.
They're not gonna get three percent. Yes, I do. Because I know the contract. That's why I tried to, that's the reason why, ma'am, to tell you the truth. I, I'm like, I wasn't gonna offer it, or even say nothing about it if I don't do my homework. One thing you will know about me, I don't say nothing unless I do my homework. And I did find out from four towns, four different towns. Two of them have the same company, and two of them don't have the same company. That's why you network with other towns to find out just what they do in the crisis.
You know, we're locked in for fourteen years with the three percent increase. If the inflation goes up, everybody's gonna go out on this. And they're gonna be sitting, really.
Okay. I mean, if, if it's a, like my mom used to tell me, if it's a, it's, it's, it's a heck of a word. It's spelled with a cricket letter. So, if, if, okay, you saw, okay, let me ask you this question. You saw what happened at Fort Heights. They didn't pay their water bill. Did it get it cut off? You saw, okay, let me ask you this question, you saw what happened at Fort Heights, they didn't pay their water bill, did it get cut off? Fort Heights owed, I forgot how many millions of dollars to, um, uh, Chicago Heights for water. Did they get their water cut off? No.
But they paying a whole lot more?
They paying a whole lot more water?
A whole point of water?
I don't know what they paid, but they, they didn't get their water shut off.
Because Chicago Heights had a lot of it?
No, 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 ma'am.
Yes.
Okay, I'm not gonna, no, first of all, no, it's nothing to do with Chicago Heights one day, but someone else came to their rescue. And they, and, and bailed them out. Fort Heights, someone else came to their rescue.
It's a different animal because it's a different level of income.
Guess what?
It's a different animal because it's a different level of income, nobody would do this for South Village.
Nobody would do what?
Bail us out.
Unless you never ask, I guess they won't. If you don't ask, we, we've got bailed out? Thirty-eight million dollars. Thirty-eight million dollars. We had a four, yes, we had 4.8 million dollars. I'm sorry, um, I'm sorry, 3.8, I don't know why I said 30, that's a lot of money. 3.8 million dollars we got bailed out through the government. We had a 4.8 million dollar, um, loan that we got when we got their strips. We paid down some of it. We still had, um, money left over. The state gave us a 4.2, I'm sorry, a 3.8 forgiveness. And we still have to, but we got bailed out, but we still had to pay the rest, which we're paying now in installments.
And that was thanks to Mayor Hanks when negotiations?
We're not going to, we're not going, we're not, we're not doing that. Okay, then, then, okay, so, okay, so that was nice. We got, we, we got the money, but we got bailed out. Your question, your statement was, we never got bailed out.
I think Fort Heights got bailed out because of their income level, because they simply cannot?
Okay, so what's wrong with that?
I think we couldn't be able to handle it.
Fort Heights is, okay, but what's wrong with helping people that couldn't help themselves, they don't have anybody to live there? People moved out of there, so therefore their income dropped down, and they couldn't afford it. So, you know, just like South Village, if we don't lose our man, because people gonna leave here unless you have something to offer them. Unless you have something to offer, they're gonna leave here too. That's the way, yes, sir?
You mentioned four towns you checked on, what four towns was that?
Yeah, I'm gonna say that because I know you have the camera and all that and everything, no, I'm gonna tell you exactly. I know, I'm gonna tell you exactly what it was. First town was Chicago Heights. Second town was Lynnwood. Third town was Homewood, and the fourth town was Lynnwood.
They, they all have, uh, they have lesser rates than we have?
Lesser rate, they all have scavengers, they don't have private.
Two, two have their, who, two have Republican, two do not?
Yes.
So out of the four, that's what that is?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
One priority is since the village have really accomplished, and they agreed to 3% rate increase on their water. It should've been balls to the wall, put 3% rate on your water as well. You know, I think your infrastructure is fixed, so you need 3% on the water as well, why wouldn't that go? I, I figured.
If you keep raising rates in South Village, you won't have South Village. If you just keep raising because we don't know how to manage money, then you won't have it. We cannot, and this is what I'm trying to iterate, we can, we don't have money if every month we have to borrow from an entity that was supposed to be used to fix the infrastructure. We can't keep doing that. We have to, we have to, we have to live within our means. And if that means that we cannot do certain things, then we can't do them. Because in order for us to get the infrastructure fixed, we gotta, we gotta pay. We at one time had $985,000 in the water fund at the beginning of 2016. That money's gone. It, it, we, we replenished so much every month, but if you take it away, it's gone. But now telling the people, and you don't tell the people that you get ready to do this, and you just send out emails, they don't know. So when you say something, they figure he's lying. You know, if, 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 if the money's not there, quit spending it. Quit giving out raises and, and, and things that we cannot afford. We give raises out to our personnel. I'm not against raises, but if you don't have the money, sooner or later it's gonna come due. And if we didn't have the water fund, where we gonna get it from? Can't borrow it? So where was it gonna come from? How are we gonna pay those bills? Because I hate to go to a, a person that's working every day, employee working, and tell him, man, I can't pay you this week. I, 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 that, that ekes me out, because they rely on that check, just like all of us do at our jobs. You rely on that payroll company, you looking for that check. Someone would write checks based on that check coming in. So when you can't do that, then that makes we derelict, and our duty is not being able to at least not control or monitor. If you know you only have $2 left in your bank account and you spent four, that's not responsible. Gotta take someone else before I get started. Who? What? Oh, 2016 was $900,000.
Okay, and then, can you tell me through 2016, how much was actually borrowed from 2016?
Don't know. I really don't know how much was borrowed, I know what was asked, but I don't know. I, that's another thing, I don't know until it actually happens. Did it, did it happen? In other words, I get emails like any other trustee gets emails to borrow from. But I'm not loan, that's like me, I'm sorry, I, I take it personal. You walk up to me and ask me, can you borrow $500? And I ask you what you gonna use it for, and you say, to spend? No. You gotta tell me what it's gonna be used for, because I'm looking at when am I gonna give my money back? And why do you need that kind of money right now? Because that's my money. I'm not gonna loan you or give you X amount of money without explanation. And I, and it has to be valid, something I feel that, okay, and I look at you to see, are you able to pay it back to me? And if you're not able to pay it back to me, I'm just borrowing money. But my kids don't borrow, they take, but they don't pay back. And if anybody here has children, they know the same thing, can I borrow such and such? You may or may not get it back. Yes, ma'am?
Are you uninformed, right?
What does ha, A have to do with B?
A has to do with B, because how are you planning on paying payroll?
Okay, then you need to come down to campaign office on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays from nine to five. And I can tell you how I plan on paying payroll, I'll tell you, but not here. As I stated at the very beginning, this is not a political meeting. So for me to express to you or tell you how I plan on paying payroll, not here. I will tell you at my campaign office. Thank you, we're looking forward to seeing you. Yes, sir?
You can't answer a question like that, then what are we doing here?
You're not, oh, I, I'm sorry, were you here because of me and what I, my capacity as being a candidate?
I come?
Or were you, excuse me, just a second. Were you here for me being a candidate for an office? Or were you here to find out some facts and figures about the village and how it's being, and how the money is being spent?
I'm here for all of that, yeah.
No, no, I am not gonna answer how I would run this village, not here. It's not gonna happen, no, sir.
You, you're sitting here saying everything?
I'm standing.
You're sitting, standing here, saying everything that we're doing wrong?
Okay.
So what?
And so you, you?
How do you remedy, we're here to talk about it?
You're one of the ones that are screaming that these meetings are political, it's done.
Nobody's screaming.
He says it's not gonna answer.
Who said I'm screaming?
We're not talking political here.
It's a question, just like the idea of we own, we own the water.
I mean?
We own the water.
Okay, right now?
When we pump it up, it's our water, we treat it, we sell it.
That's right now?
And we sell it, we make money from it, just like when I go to the, when I go to work. I go to work and sell myself, come back with the money, and then the village wants X amount for the water, they want X amount for the phone, they want X amount for the town prax, for the town taxes. They want so much for the school board. So I gotta go to work, come back, and pay for that.
Most people do. Most people go to, they have to pay, you pay your taxes?
That's right.
Okay.
That's just like the idea with the water department, that's making us money, and we?
It is, isn't, isn't enterprise?
And we take that money, so we're not borrowing it, it's the idea that it's making us money.
Okay, let me ask you a question, sir.
So we're paying our bills with that.
Let me ask you a question. You're right. Now, let me ask you this question, since you have all this. The water, the village does not, is not supposed to be relying on the water to pay its bills. It should be water-related areas that we pay, not payroll. What's the police department has to do with the water money that we collect? What, what do they, what, what is it that we, why are we using water money to pay, to payroll for the police department?
When I go out and make money?
I, 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 you asked a question, I'm just asking you. So I'm just trying to find out from you, why do you think, do you think it's correct to pay the salaries of the police department, it has nothing to do with the water department out of the water fund?
The water department is not a cash, it's a cash cow for us.
It is?
Yeah.
Tell the residents, excuse me, tell the residents that that's why we can't fix the streets? That's why we can't fix the water main breaks, that's why we can't upgrade the infrastructure? Because we keep paying some other people that has nothing to do with the water. The police are paid out of our taxes. That's where the police department comes from. No water money. Public Works is the only department that works on the water directly. So if we have to pay them, or if they need equipment, it should come out of the water fund, not the police department.
It comes out of the general fund. When, when I pay my, when I pay my electric bill on my phone bill, it comes out of my paycheck.
Okay. But you, but you, but you, 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 okay, if you got five jobs?
Yeah.
And you, listen to me, you got five jobs. And so you're telling me that all your five jobs that you got, you, you put it into a general fund, which is your bank account or whatever, okay? But, when you collect money for a, a particular item, if you went out there to collect money for a particular item, how, what gives you the right to take that money and put it in someplace else?
Perhaps I got a hobby or something like that.
Oh, okay.
That, that's how?
We're not gonna argue, I, I ain't know we're gonna turn into that. Because now you think that, you know, you're, 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 you're trying to make it political, and I'm not going there. Yes, you are, because now you're telling me what we should and should not do with the money. Why have a water fund if you don't use it as a water fund?
Then put it, then put it in a general fund, it'll be a general fund.
You can't do that.
General bills.
Can't do that. Yes.
Can I say something?
Go ahead.
First of all, you're talking, uh, out, out of your hat because your money that you make and how you pay your bills is totally different. There are ordinances on that water department, and what can and cannot be done. I have brought this up at many, many meetings and got shot down. They are not supposed to borrow money from the water department. It is to be paid back if it's an emergency. The money is, nobody, nobody from the water department is ever to be laid off because their payroll comes from the water fund that they work for. But again, we went ahead and we broke that rule too. But you cannot compare how you pay your bills to how the village does. Because there's ordinances, statutes, laws, all kinds of things governing what's done and how it's done. And it hasn't been done correctly here for a long time. Or we wouldn't be owing the water department this much money.
So how would we go about correcting that?
Well, sure, you know something, I'm, 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 I'm gonna ask you one question, then I'm gonna leave it alone. Because you've been saying, how do we, what do you expect, how are you gonna make this, how are you gonna do that? What's your recommendation that we do to get out of this?
I, for one thing, we got people that, that are not paying their taxes, that's a problem too, that we're not getting the money from the taxes that are, that are owed to us. So we have to go somewhere else. If I can't pay my bills, I gotta go and get another job, and you said five, I may have to get six to pay my bills.
Okay, so you're saying go after people that didn't pay their taxes, right?
We have to get rid of, we have to get money from somewhere to pay our bills, it comes out of the same pocket.
Okay, so you're saying your solution is go after the ones that owe money?
It's not a solution, I'm just saying that's one of our problems too, why we're so deep in the hole. There's people in this town that owe us money.
Okay.
Taxes, people have moved out that don't pay their taxes.
Okay.
Live here, that don't pay their taxes.
Okay, so that, that's your solution?
That's one of the reasons.
Okay.
That's one of the reasons we don't have our money that we should have, that we should have.
Okay, so therefore you're saying go and ask for the people that don't pay the bills?
So, so right, so I got money in this pocket, so I can take it out, instead of going to the bank, I got money here, well, let's turn around and pay somebody's bills, because I gotta pay bills anyway. Otherwise, I get a late fee or a cancellation fee, and I don't have nothing.
See, you're very fortunate, that's nice, a lot of people don't have that. A lot of people don't have the money, a lot of people got laid off.
I don't have the money.
A lot of people don't, they, they, they got fired, the company closed out, what do you do for those people?
What do you think happened to me?
What do you do for those people?
They told me the same thing, that if they don't, if I don't pay my water bill, they shut me out, well, that's too bad, I don't pay my taxes, they come get my house.
Okay. So then that's what I'm saying, so what do you do for those people?
I have to go out and do the hustle.
Oh, so you're saying that I hustle enough?
Okay. Well, you, you gotta pay your bills.
Okay, I'm just listening, I'm just, I have an answer for it, so that's what you do?
Well, yeah, I can't, I can't afford to live in Deer Creek, so I'll live where I can, where I can afford things.
You said what now about Deer Creek?
I can't afford to live in Deer Creek, so I gotta live?
Why, why, why do you think Deer Creek, wait a minute, for?
Because people?
No, no, wait a minute, I just wanna ask you a question. So you're saying, and I'm gonna get this straight, because I've heard this before, I'm gonna get this straight. Why are, oh, why is Deer Creek, yes, make sure you put that, a little bit this way so you see. Um, why are people in Deer Creek so? Put on, whatever, whatever you wanna call it, who are criticized so much, why?
I can't afford to live over, I can't afford?
I didn't ask you, you can't afford to live, I can't afford to live in a lot of places, I can't afford to live in Lake Point Towers, I would love to.
That's right.
But I can't. So why are we being, why people that are living in whatever, being ostracized, that they're talking about? I just wanna ask you, you made the statement, I'm just asking you a question.
Because people, a lot of people over there complain about the taxes they make, that they have to pay for the property.
They don't complain, it's a fact.
That's, that's.
It's a fact.
But you can put my house in their living room.
And?
That's why they're paying three times my?
Okay, so what does that have to do with anything, sir? Why are we, why, why are people that are trying to, or are able to do better? Why are people that are able to do better being prosecuted?
No, I'm saying that's why we're paying our bills, that's why I have different jobs, that's going hustle.
Okay, so then what does it got to do with Deer Creek?
I'm just mentioning that, I can't afford to live there.
I'm just asking, sir, what does that do, I'm not gonna argue back for, because you're making it look like that people in Deer Creek should pay more because of?
Not because of.
That's what you're saying?
No, no. I can't afford to live there, is what I'm saying, because?
No, you said that, that Deer Creek, people that live in Deer Creek should pay more because they have more.
Because I can't pay my bills on it, I, I'm surviving where I'm at, that's why I got?
Okay, but that's what you chose.
It's not what I chose.
Okay, all right. Yep, Ms. Parker, go ahead, that's, that's after you, I'm through.
Okay, I just wanna go back to, um, the way the money comes into the village.
Perfect.
I wanna go back to the way the money comes into the village by taxes mostly. And there's like two periods a year where the money comes in, and between there are dips where there's no money generated. Hasn't it always been a fact, you've been here for, for eight years?
I've been here in, 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 um, in South Village, 34.
Trustee, trustee.
Oh, trustee, 11.
11.
Yes.
In all these 11 years?
Mm-hmm.
On the packet, during the dips, wouldn't you go and have a credit line that you would borrow from?
Yes. Yes, we did.
So what's the difference between borrowing from the water fund and paying from a bank? Those were better times, we're in bad times right now.
I'm gonna say this, and then this will be the last one, because it's time. The difference is, back then, we were able to borrow the money and still have money in other ways. And when we got it, it was called a bridge loan. We borrowed the money between, as you just stated, we borrowed the money between February, where we got our taxes, until September, when the next one came, we would pay that back then.
Is that what's happening now?
No. What's happening now, you pay bills with money that you got in, and it was supposed to be earmarked for a specific thing, basically streets, that's why your streets look the way. I could do a whole meeting on CDBG? I could do a whole meeting on CDBG and M, and MFT. I could do a whole meeting on that, and let you know exactly why we don't pay, or we haven't paid, we haven't got the streets. Because you have to, first of all, know what CDBG and what it covers. So we're not gonna do, I'll do that at, at a later time. But back then, when we borrowed that half million dollars, we could borrow five hundred thousand dollars to bridge us through the summer. We paid it back at a small interest rate, but we still kept our other funds to do things that we had to do. Pardon me?
That's not possible.
How, no, no, now it's not, because you know why? We can't borrow any money. No, we cannot. We cannot borrow any money unless you pay credit card rates, which is twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty-nine percent, someplace. So, no, I know you don't wanna hear that, but that's the truth. I'm not, I'm on camera, I have no reason to lie. We borrowed that money back then because we were, had a triple A bond rating, and we was able to borrow the money from the banks because our rating was so high. Now we have no rating.
So you would already let the bills go?
Pardon me? So we stopped buying stuff. Stopped spending money on, on things that we don't need. Do we need a copier? No. We didn't need a color copier, never had one in the village, now all of a sudden we got one now. As I stated, we're not, it's, we're not, we're not taking more questions. We're not taking any more questions, because it becomes a, it's becoming a, um, argumentative. If you want to talk after the meeting, be more than glad. I'm not gonna hold everybody else up because you have a personal window against whatever.
We got questions.
If it's a question, and not a comment, and not a, um, going after somebody, I'll, I'll, I'll listen to it. Yes, sir? Because you're going back before, go ahead.
You mentioned that we have a color copier. Whatever happened to the, to the numbers, we were supposed to have, to, to see who's using the copier. Because there's a lot of things going on, and we're paying for, it's not necessary.
Why don't you bring that up at the meeting, sir? Because I don't, I don't have no way knowing who does what, no, sir.
You're asking about the idea of, uh...
I said, we didn't need, we did not need a color copier.
True enough.
Okay, but we got one for the next five years.
Yeah.
Okay, why?
Don't know why.
Oh, ask that question.
I don't know why, a lot of things, but I'm trying to get some answers now, and I said...
I, I can't answer that, sir. That's why I moved it, no, because I didn't understand it either. Alright, now, now, um, we're going to, this was more live than I thought, it was good, it was very good. I hope we all learned something, I know I did. But, um, it's just, I, I don't like the fact that things are thrown at me as a trustee, and I have, I can't ask questions, or if I do ask questions, I get because. And until we can do that, until we can, um, be more open and, and let people know, this is your money. In a way, brother, I got billions of dollars. As we just stated, if I had billions of dollars, think I'm gonna give it all to the village? No. No, I pay my taxes, I pay whatever I pay, but I'm not gonna bail somebody out because of, we didn't spend our money correctly, we don't know how to manage our money. That's what it comes down to. If you, just because you got checks in your checkbook doesn't mean you can write them. And that's what it seems to think, that we have it in here. But we still got a few checks, let us write those to them. Oops, we don't have the money. Now we gotta hurry up and pay it, and if we don't pay it, then this is gonna get shut down. We can't run the village like we run our house. We can't do that. This is millions of dollars. So I'd like to thank everybody for coming out, and I hope that you are those that were supposed to take care of the obligation. Yesterday, I hope they did, those that didn't. Maybe that's why you're not out here, and I'm talking about Valentine's Day. So, you guys have a great weekend, and, um, thank you very much for the, um, indulgences, and I appreciate it. Thank you.